Chief of the Two Vine Leaders in prayer.
Father God, we want to thank you for allowing us to come out here and do your worship, Father. Thank you for your daughter, son. Thank you for the Christ who paid for the goodness of us. And Father, we ask that you give us open hearts and open minds, Father, crown our heads with wisdom as we make decisions, Father, for your purpose and for your glory, Father, not on our own, but the time of man. Jesus, may we pray, and ask for our own name.
Amen.
Amen.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Lois Jordan.
Here.
Ms. Betty Johnson. Mr. Craig Gill. Rexon McCarthy. Mayor Jackie Johnson.
Item number one on the agenda is public comment. At this time, anyone who's desiring to speak on any item that is on the agenda may do so at this time. We're asking that you hold your comments for two minutes. Assuming that no one desires to make any comments, we move to item number two, approval of minutes for September of 2017 minutes.
Mayor, I would like to voice my objections to this. This is not exactly what I said. I ask that my name be removed as the second on the motion that approved this, and that's not stated here.
No, it's not. That's not what I understood. That's mine. So you asked that your name be removed? I thought it was contingent upon...
No.
What did you understand, Mr.?
I just thought because it was not approved by the Finance Committee, I also said for my name to be removed, therefore, I wouldn't, my name wouldn't be affiliated with the motion at all.
Okay. I thought you seconded it, contingent to the change. So did anyone second it then?
I did second, but it was to take my name off because it was not approved by the Finance Committee.
Take your name off of, I'm just making sure I got it clear.
Of the August minutes.
I see. I see. I understand your point.
See, we made the motion in August that it should be...
You made, you wanted to take your name off the motion?
Right.
The motion or the second?
The motion.
The second, I mean.
I was the second on the motion, and I wanted my name to be taken off of the motion which allowed that. Because, in my opinion, it was done illegally, and I don't want to be a part of it.
So the statement that I wrote that on the approval of the minutes was correct, that if you seconded the minutes, if your name had been taken off, is that correct, of the motion?
So let me understand, you're saying that that is incorrect?
This, these minutes are incorrect because this is not what I said.
Okay. Then I'll accept the motion to, accept the motion with corrections.
See, you understand why I want correction to be?
I do now, but I have one clarification. Last time, my understanding was that you wanted that one correction, then Mr. McCarthy made the motion, you seconded it with the agreement that there would be that clarification. Am I right there? But I guess clarification is not right.
Yeah. The clarification needs rewording.
Got you. Okay.
To say that I want...
We will reword the clarification. That we can do easily.
And in my opinion, what you would have to do to fix that is you would have to call for another motion because mine is off of. You wouldn't have a...
The motion for the previous meeting, not the minutes.
Right.
Can we do that?
That's her opinion. It's not mine.
Which is, Mr.?
No, I don't have an opinion. I think the motion stands as it is.
It is.
Now, she can say her name can be removed, but we don't go back and redo all that.
It's a big one.
Okay. What would your motion require?
I make a motion that we accept the minutes from last month's meeting with the adjustments of Ms. Cupp, of having those changes adjusted and made with a removal from the minutes of the August meeting.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Oppose?
I'm thinking about what Rex is saying.
Let the record reflect. Excuse me?
Put me as a no. Just take me off, all that.
I didn't understand you. What did you say?
I was trying to understand what Rex was saying, but if you just put me as a no, it won't matter.
Let the record reflect that it was unanimously approved? Resolution number 107.
Jackie, it was not unanimous. It was a two win vote. I'm saying take me off of the minutes motion. Just don't, let me vote no, and then there won't be any confusion.
So your vote was no. Let the record reflect that it was approved with two voting no.
Okay, voting no.
Resolution number 107 dash 1001 Airport Improvement.
Mayor, Council, what this is is to approve this supplemental of the CIP report. We had a conference call, myself, the mayor, the airport manager, Trev. It's an annual document that we have to do with the airport. Basically, it's planning out for the next five years what projects you're going to undertake and how the funds that are, you expect the airport to receive, how those will spend. So this is a, I don't know if y'all got a copy of the actual CIP document within y'all's packet, but basically, we're continuing ongoing projects throughout the basis of ongoing projects throughout the next few years. We've got a new structure removal project we're going with currently, Pre-Hilatian and Expediate Airport, Air Fuel Access Road, and then some planning and preparation for hopes of having a new airport constructed in the near future. Any questions on any of that? I know it's kind of vague, but it is, it is something that we do annually to try and keep the funds coming in.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 17 dash 1001 State of the 2018-20 CIP Project Justification.
Motion made. Seconded, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Let the record reflect that it was unanimously approved. Introduction of Ordinance Number 1003. Hold that down.
This is the blue books that we've given you. You know, we've been working on this for several years now, bringing it up to date, and this is finally it, the version. We need you to study it and look over it and read it. And you've approved everything so far, but this is just the final print, and we will go to print after, with the official online after you vote.
Now, this is just the introduction.
This is the introduction, but what I wanted to do was give them plenty of time to read it all. But if you could explain to them the way you said it to me the other day, exactly what this does as far as correcting anything that's in there that needs to be corrected, and what's, what purposes this serves.
What it is, we've been working on bringing our code of ordinances up to date, probably for the layup, what Amanda...
Since 1312.
A year and a half, two years.
I know. Way into it when I came.
Bill Muckey's here, and I think way back there when we first adopted it, what the law required is to codify all your ordinances. Well, we started in the seventies with the first code of ordinances. As we go along, every year, two years, three years, they add to our code of ordinances. Well, what we, we've reached a point where they needed to come in and just go over everything and add all the new ordinances, check the old ordinances to see if they have been declared unconstitutional, because most of our ordinances are based upon state law.
Right.
And this ordinance that Amanda has asked y'all to introduce tonight, it basically the council adopts the new code, which adopts all the new corrections and additions to our old ordinance. And it's done by us adopting a new ordinance, adopting all the ordinances in the code. And what Amanda would like y'all to do, to introduce the ordinance tonight, give you plenty of time for you now, the next council meeting, to read the books in front of you. It's got all of our laws, and most y'all have been reading and studying it all these years. Just go through it and be sure to meet with your approval. And then we'll have a hearing next month and talk about it. And if y'all think everything's in order, then we'll adopt the ordinance.
It was my understanding that we do not, that we no longer have to approve ordinance introductions?
It's not somebody has to introduce. A council member has to introduce an ordinance. So one of you three needs to introduce that ordinance. They'll have to approve it. They'll have to vote on it, but actually introduce.
A council member has to...
A council member has to introduce an ordinance.
I didn't understand it that way. I thought we just were going to hear it and...
No, it needs to be introduced by the lawmakers, and y'all are the lawmakers. The executive branch sees that the ordinance is still cleared out.
Okay. Well, I'll make the motion to introduce it.
And that's all it needs. Or just ask it to be introduced.
Properly moved?
No, don't need no...
Don't need a second.
Okay. Just needs to be introduced.
Ordinance had been introduced.
And for the paper, there'll be a public hearing on it next week.
Next council.
And she'll get you all the orders.
Yes, sir.
Item number six, Franklin Parish Amelant Services.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry. Introduction to Ordinance Number 1004 Personnel Policy.
Now, what this one is, is when we were reviewing the book that's in front of you, Personnel Policy portion is, prior to this update, the book was last updated in 2001. Since then, there have been several changes in the personnel policy through ordinance here. That is the only update that we can identify so far that has not been included in your book, so we're asking you to update it. You've already passed through three ordinances, but we need to update the most recent version, and we've given you that tonight. So you just need to introduce that.
We have no...
We know that it was presented to you in January of 2016. The same thing, that you proofread it, but we could not find the vote on it. So we need to...
I would like to introduce Ordinance 1004 Personnel Policy.
Properly moved? Introduced. Next item, Franklin Parish Amelant Services, Consideration for Proposed Contract.
Mayor, this has since the last council meeting. You and the council asked me to review the court rulings that Dr. Eldridge pointed out, as well as this, I had a copy of the agreement. And basically, I'm here tonight just to report that we can do it. We can give Wismar Amelant Service an exclusive contract. And the only thing I see different than the agreement, Dr. Eldridge, it said we were doing it by resolution, but reading this court decision done by an ordinance. The little difference in it, Dr. Eldridge, is an ordinance gives a chance to have a public hearing. I would think, what I would recommend doing is to have Amanda tomorrow to print each one of y'all a copy of this contract, and then, again, someone on the council needs to introduce an ordinance, and it looked like it would be next, the next board meeting, which would mean we could take it up in December if the council wanted, and the mayor, you know, doesn't veto it or approve it. And in the public hearing, you know, everybody can voice their thoughts on it, maybe. And I guess, do y'all want Dr. Eldridge maybe to go over this contract one more time with y'all, or you just want copies of it?
How many copies? I just can't find. You covered it pretty thoroughly the last time.
And if you have any questions, I guess Danny or Dr. Eldridge would be available to answer any questions. Amanda, you're going to need to give everyone a copy. And would y'all rather her just to email it to each one of y'all?
Everybody.
It's only four or five pages. So why don't you email it to everyone so they can study it. And again, if a council member wants to introduce an ordinance, I'll prepare it, and you can introduce it at the next council meeting, okay? If that's what you want to do.
That'd be fine.
That okay, Mayor? That'd be fine. Thank you. So there's no necessary action to be taken on that at this time. Item number seven, Mayor Meyer Munder.
Like, Mayor, Council, I have two short items, the Waterman Relocation Project, that we are, we are still in a 45-day legal free period on that. We should be approaching the end of that. There are the next, excuse me, a couple of weeks. The 2017 Street Improvements, I know y'all have noticed, majority of the paving has been completed, but there's still some patching left to do on Franklin, Franklin, Earl, and, oh, I know there's one more, Westside, that there's still some patching remaining to be done that needs to be completed. Fire for that finished is also striking of the completed streets. So those are the two items that are remaining. We expect the patching to be done later this week. Striking to be followed within the next couple of weeks. So we anticipate substantial completion by the end of the month or very, very part of the following. Lastly, the last thing on my list here is the CDPG lift station improvements and plans and specifications on that are complete. They've been submitted to Louisiana Department of Health and Hospitals and CDPG for their approval and permit. Are there any questions about any of those items and any of the other projects that we have been working on?
You're doing good.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you. Item number eight, Public Works Munder Report.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, crews still continue to mow the heath. Grass starting to slow down. We're still gaining on it, trying to catch up on the grass, but it's helping by slowing down. Street Department, we're still picking up limbs and debris, and we started, two weeks ago, started cleaning out the concrete ditch. So we're off A Street, we'll continue to do that. We installed some culverts on Mason Street, and I've got some culverts to install on Gunn Street this week for the ambulance service over there. Planning on starting on that tomorrow. The water crew, they fixed the water leak up on Luke Road. If you notice Saturday, that the state deteriorated traffic. That was required by the state so they could fix that water leak on Luke Road. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Greg. Council, do you have any questions pertaining to either of those reports that was given to you? Item number nine, Park Chief Munder Report.
Good afternoon, Council, Mayor.
Good afternoon.
This month, we had one fire, one construction fire in town, one construction fire out of town, two grass fires in town, one out of town, two fire alarms. We assisted a helicopter twice this month. We installed 12 smoke detectors. We made one false alarm for a total of 22 calls for the month. I want to report that firefighter Josh Smith, he obtained his preregular hazmat operations. They qualified him to take his firefighter one October 3, and he did obtain that. So he just added another certified firefighter to our roster. The Winsborough Fire Department has been attending a medical purchase funding class hosted by NILA, just to help assist the ambulance when we are on the fire scene and in motor vehicle accidents and extrications. The Winsborough Fire Department will be attending a parish-wide live fire. It actually started tonight. It's going to be October 16 through 19. They're going to be learning how to fight LPG props, flying engine car fires. We're going to be out by the old flea market, so if y'all pass by and you see big balls of fire, a bunch of fire trucks all week long, that's, that's what's going on. The firefighters have been doing pre-fire plans for the last couple of months to help prepare for the fire, the PRM fire ready that we have in 2019. I'm asking the council, I give you some information. I'm requesting for approval from the council for firefight qualification requirements. Right now, we don't really have any stated requirements. The ones that I'm recommending are ones that's pretty...
Chief.
I'm sorry.
Get with me first before you go to the council.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief. Police Chief Munder Report.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Hold it. Sorry, Dan. Did anyone have any questions pertaining to Park Chief? Okay, Chief, go ahead.
A little alarmed that you're stopping him from talking about what he would like to see his department do. I mean, I'm looking through this and it doesn't look like it's something that we, when we're looking at our personnel manual that we might need to consider. I really appreciate being able to hear what you're saying about this.
Well, if I stopped him from saying anything, you know, I apologize, but as far as introducing for a council motion, I would like to review it first.
I mean, I didn't take it that he would really ask us on a motion tonight, but just showing it to us.
If you got something else to say, by all means, you know, please satisfy, you know, Ms. Cupp.
That's all of us, man. I would just give it to them just to look over. Not really looking for a judgment tonight.
Well, what we've heard sounds good to me. And then we could go back, Mayor, if you would permit me to go back to the Public Works Department that does the Amal. They are doing a fantastic job over like at the water tower on Oak Street. It looks, and the park, it looks really, really good.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief. Police Chief Munder Report.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Month nine, 1817 to 10, 1517. Criminal charges was 22 for a year of 385. Traffic charges 62 for a year of 964. Highway accidents 19, parking lots was eight. Total accidents for loans 27, and calls for service support 434. That's all I have.
Were there any questions that you'd like to question, Chief? Hear none. Item number...
Let me, let me, I guess this would be where I would ask the question. Did anybody ever talk with, with custody court about why they're not reporting as they were in the past?
That is a good question because I inherited sort of that issue, and I've been asking some question myself. I've not gotten an answer, but I did find in notes, it said that you had brought the question up and that you had offered to do it. Is that correct?
And offered to do what?
To meet with them and give the report on the, when they reconcile with the police department and the thing. I've been asking that question. I've not gotten an answer from them. But when I saw that you offered, I thought, that's great. Okay, offered, so...
I don't get what you're saying there.
I'm glad you brought that up. But it is, it's supposed to be done quarterly, and I haven't just returned, I'm not sure how, how recent you've received.
We haven't had one since then. I can circle it up.
Wow. That's quite a while to catch up. Okay, we need to catch up to that then. I'll get with you and show you the exact note. It was an old note from, from a council meeting that said Kay volunteered to help. I'm like, hey, Kay. Thank you.
I volunteered to help. I can tell he helped.
I'd be happy to let you do that.
Item number 16, Human Officers' Munder Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Number dogs, doctor for the month, one, one for the year. Trains, one, one for the year. Folks, eight for the month, fifty-two for the year. New dogs, six, nine, eight for the year. Cats, six for the month, nineteen for the year. Tuler care for the month, twenty-three dogs, nine cats, four hundred fifty pounds of dog food, four thousand for the year, three pounds for the month, seventeen for the year. Tuler dog in the pen, seventeen, cats, nine. Tuler animals in the pen, twenty-six. Ms. Lanis, eight, forty-four calls. Dead animals, fifteen. Tuler art for the year, nineteen. Two dog bikes, five for the year. That's it, Mayor.
Are there any questions pertaining to the human officers' report? Hear none. Item Well, Code Enforcement Officer Munder Report.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I have a total of four houses taken down so far, two trailers removed. I have an additional house and trailer on Pope Street that's going to be removed by the owners of the town for the next two weeks. They just came and received a demolition permit. Out of 11 vehicles tagged, four, four removed off the properties. I've had three people come in and ask for an additional time to repair their vehicles so they don't get towed. We've talked, we gave them up to 30 days more, no more than 30 days to fix the vehicle, get the money they got to fix the vehicle, and get them legal. As you notice, we got Rosas Express finally licensed up and open right down the street. And I'm still on the third set of letters condemning the rest of about the 13, 14 houses I have here in the city to be condemned. I just sent out the third set of letters. It's the next process in condemning the homes. As soon as that's done, there'll be one more set before the city can really additional step in and tear them down ourselves. That's all I have right now in my report for the month.
Thank you, Nick. Do we have any questions to the code officer? Thank you, Nick. Community Center Munder Report.
Good evening. We had three events for the month of September. One of them was the meeting for the Franklin Parish Police Department. It was really nice. We got a chance to come, so I stopped by for a little while, and it was really good. And fortunately, we've got pretty many people out here to, to fix the system that was killing everybody's service while we've been there working on it now. So, but that's our, that's my report.
Are there any questions? Hear none. Thank you very much. Item number 14, Monthly Financial Report.
We've given you several things here, so I'll go through first and kind of show you what each thing, which each set is, and then you can ask any questions. In addition to, let's start with... In addition to, let's start with the monthly financial report. On your budget versus actual comparisons, we should be at 25 percent. So when you're judging where we stand and what needs to change, do that from 25 percent. We also gave you a 13-month comparison for the sales tax fund, sales tax street project, general fund, and utility fund, just to see how the month, I mean, how the year has run, and to compare to September of last year. In addition to that, we did a five-year comparison this time, just because I like to throw numbers out there nicely. But just so you can see, we've done over a five-year time period, whether it's consistent or not, up or down. And the other document that you have there is a copy. It's gonna be this one with the blue highlighted on it. And what that is, is that is a copy of where our payment cleared to the IRS, as well as the receipt of the payment, just to show you that that has been cleared up and that it's been paid. So we're, and we're correct on that.
Okay. That being said, we were told back in September, Mr. McCarthy asked the question, if we were current on all of our taxes and penalties? We were told yes.
That's right.
And yet, on September 22nd, there's a tax lien file.
Yes, but if you'll look on September 19th, they received our pay, no, I'm sorry, they received our payment on the 18th. It cleared our bank on the 19th. So that, what was filed was not filed correctly, and they are retracting it. Because that's why you see here, when they received, a copy of both. When they received it, and it cleared the bank the next day, so they were pretty quick on that. So I answer Mr. McCarthy, truthfully. Try two of those.
So, last year... In September... I wish this kind of information could be in our original packet of stuff that would not have been shown. So we would have time to review to see if we would ask any questions. So what kind of impact? Last year in September, we transferred 300,000. And this year in September, you're showing a transfer of only 160,000.
Last year in September, we transferred 150,000.
Transfers to general, 300,000.
I'm looking on the, are you looking on the general fund?
Well, I'm looking on the sales tax.
I'll have to look and see what... She may have dated it, one at the end of the month differently in the sales tax than it was, you know, the 30th to the first.
Say that again?
Perhaps, because I wasn't here at the time, so I didn't change anything that was done before. Perhaps she dated it differently. If this one was 150,000, which is about what they were trying to operate on, it looks like, a month last year, as far as the transfers. If one has the 30th and one has the first, it depends. I don't know that that's the case, but that's likely the case. And 150 for, for September of last year.
Last year, and the sixth of this year.
I don't understand. If the reports are incorrect back here, what is that doing across the line?
I'm, clarify, what is across the line and what is that doing? I can't go back and correct something that they did a year ago, obviously. And I'm not gonna change the dates that they do. So if that is the case, which I need to check and see if that is the case, I can't change the dates. If one was done, what she's referring to, for anyone who doesn't understand, is when we transfer the money from the sales tax fund to the general fund, that requires several entries. One of those is, you enter into the sales tax fund a date. You make that you're withdrawing. Then you deposit it into the general fund on another day. So if she put a withdrawal date of, say, September, of August 30th or 31st, and put a deposit date of September, it's gonna show up in different months. That's what it probably happened, but I would have to look it up and see. And we were referring to a year ago, and I did not do the transaction, so I'll have to check. That's likely the case. All right. And I can, I can check that actually when we leave here, then I can give you a definite answer on that.
It looks like the majority of them are different. There are three or four of them in there that are different.
See, if you look, yeah, you can tell from September and October, if you look at the next month, it's gonna be basically the same thing. That 150 or 100 that you're looking for for September is reflected into the October month, or the month before, the month after. You see what I'm saying? I can do a printout directly from the bank for you, though, of whatever the transactions were.
I would just link it to my...
And you, you should also have a show, reflected on your bank statement that you used.
I would like to make a statement for the record. I have a copy, so you can make sure you can get it exactly like I want it said. I object to the way our monthly reports are handled, because it does not give council members the ability to accept or reject the information as presented. At least a negative impression to our constituents that whatever is present is okay. Even if there are errors, which are very common in months past, there are no checks and balances on the correction of these errors. And even though the, somebody somewhere might have said it's okay to do it this way in Winsborough, Louisiana, I don't feel that it is.
But I need a copy of it for the record.
Yes, I'd like that in order.
Okay. Are there any other questions pertaining to financial report? I'm here none. I'll pick a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn, second. Second.